Guys, ready? Ready? Excuse me. We're going to get started. Thank you. This is the public meeting and hearing is called order. I recognize the presence of council members. Councilmember Blackwell, Parker, Thom, Greenlee, Gim, Taubinberger, Jones, and Bass. Thank you all very much. This public meeting and hearing of the council, the Board of Education, and the mayor offer the purpose of coordinating our activities for the improvement and the benefit of public education in Philadelphia as required by Section 12209 of the Home Rule Charter and Council Resolution 181014. Mr. Christmas, can you please read the title of the resolution?
Calling for the Council Committee of the whole to convene public meetings and public hearings pursuant to the educational supplement of the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to review the administration, management, operation, and finances of the school district and adopt plans to coordinate the activities of the Board of Education, the mayor, and the city council for the improvement and benefit of public education in Philadelphia.
Thank you, sir. Seated here with me today are Mayor James Kenny, the Board of Education President Joyce Wilkerson, Board Vice President Wayne Walker, School Superintendent Dr. William Height, Board Members Julia Danzy, Letitia Huguet Hinton.
No.
Gaia, I'm sorry. Mr. Christmas gave me a briefing prior to, and I still figured out a way to screw that up. I'm sorry. Mallory Fix Lopez, Lee Huang, Maria McCollgan, Chris McGinley, and Angela McGyver. I would like to welcome you all here today for our partnership meeting and the public hearing. Today's agenda will go as follows. First, Mayor Kenny will be recognized for remarks. Then, the Board President Joyce Wilkerson will be recognized for the purpose of introducing board members and the superintendent. The Board will make a presentation on its key accomplishments in the 2018-2019 school year, and Dr. Height will then present to on the district's major accomplishments in 2018-2019. We'll then have questions and comment from the council members followed by public testimony and adjournment. Thank you very much for your participation. This continues to be a good day for the city of Philadelphia and its ability to have local control over its school district. So, I want to thank everybody who participated in that very significant process. I particularly want to thank my good friend Councilwoman Janie Blackwell, who pushed that way, way back when nobody thought it was possible. Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, at this point, I would like to recognize our mayor, James Kenny.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone, and I want to thank you, Council President Clark and members of city council for the opportunity to speak today alongside members of our Board of Education and leadership of the school district of Philadelphia and at this biannual meeting supported by the education supplement of the Home Rule Charter. This meeting is a reminder of how many people are ready and willing to come together to create a better education system for all of our kids. We know that their success and our city's success depend on it. It's up to us, the adults in the room, to put our minds and resources together to ensure that our kids have the quality education that they deserve. I want to thank everyone here today for their commitment to this shared cause. Over the last several years, we have made great progress in establishing stability for the district and setting the stage for progress. Our administration, with the support of city council, allocated $1.2 billion in general fund contributions to the school district over five years. This is over $700 million in new contributions because of the commitment we all made last year. This funding has helped our schools to build upon the progress they've made under the leadership of Superintendent Dr. William Height and his team. The school district has doubled the number of high-performing schools in Philadelphia since 2014, and in September, the U.S. Department of Education recognized two Philadelphia public schools among this year's National Blue Ribbon Schools, a distinction that goes to less than 1% of schools nationwide. With the additional funding from the city, the district's financial outlook is stronger too, enabling the Board to vote last month to authorize borrowing $500 million for more capital improvements to our school buildings. The well-being of our students and staff is a priority that we all share, and we'll continue to work with the district as they reinvest in our facilities to bring them into the 21st century after decades of disinvestments and devastating cuts. In addition to new funding and stable finances, our partnerships are stronger than ever. We began the process of returning schools to local control two years ago. One of the many benefits we anticipated was a stronger collaborative relationship between the city and the school district and better alignment of services to our city's children. I'm pleased that the work we do together has generated so many opportunities for children and families. For example, earlier this year, DHS put out a $23 million RFP for out-of-school-time programs that align with the district's goals. Thanks to the unified vision behind the funding opportunity, today there are quality OST programs in schools and community sites that add tremendous value to our children's academic experiences and contribute to their personal growth. In addition, the city's PHL pre-K program has helped over 6,000 children prepare for kindergarten and benefit from the district's targeted investments in early literacy. Together, we've also established 17 community schools, serving nearly 10,000 children and their families. These schools address barriers to attendance and promote strong family and community engagement through expanded services, including OST, adult education, arts and culture events, and more. And a partnership between the Department of Behavioral Health and Intellectual Disability Services, Drexel University, and the school district has brought the STEP Support Program into 22 schools, each receiving a licensed social worker and three behavioral health specialists to support children and connect them to appropriate services. The district and DBH are now working together to restructure behavioral health services in all our schools as soon as the next school year. The city's Office of Workforce Development and district's high school office are also partnering to create a robust career-connected learning system. This system will support the district's plan to ensure that all high school students can engage in real-world experiences that expose, prepare, and connect them to in-demand careers. The city and district jointly released an RFP to inform the design of a system that will make it easier for students to connect to the jobs and for employers to connect to the schools. We've also continued to build civic engagement and public support for our schools. Through the Philadelphia Reading Coaches Program, hundreds of residents have volunteered their time to read one-on-one with young students and develop their confidence and enjoyment as readers. And this year marked the Fund for the School District of Philadelphia's Second Annual Dress-Down Philly Public Schools fundraiser event, as well as the inaugural Philly Homecoming Weekend for district alumni. Looking ahead, we are going to double down on our progress through new initiatives and greater collaboration amongst the city, the school district, and the post-secondary partners like our Community College of Philadelphia. Today, we can ensure that all children have access to great schools in their neighborhood. When all our students succeed, our city thrives and becomes a better place to live, work, and play. Our administration has made education a top priority over the last four years, and we're still committed to that vision for our city. I'm very grateful to city council and our city's residents for joining us and, quote, "being part of the district's progress," end quote, and look forward to our continued work together. And I'm especially grateful to our dedicated teachers, counselors, nurses, support staff, administrators, and OST and pre-K providers, who are on the ground every day providing quality education, engaging environments, and valuable services for our kids. Similarly, I want to thank our partners, including PFT, SEIU, 32BJ, and CASA for their leadership on behalf of students and staff. The same goes for our school board members, including President Joyce Wilkerson, who are dedicated to strengthening our entire system of public schools, including district-run and district charter schools. We are also fortunate to have a local legislative delegation and a governor who are committed to improving our education system. As I've said many times, our children deserve every opportunity to reach their God-given potential, and I believe our combined efforts will continue the meaningful progress we've made over the last few years. Last week, I met our two new school board student reps, Doha Ibrahim from Abraham Lincoln High School and Amir Williams from Boys Latin of Philadelphia Charter School. I was blown away by how bright and how passionate they are about serving their fellow students. While this may not seem like a big deal, it is in the context of where we were just two years ago this week when the SRC voted to disband. Now, we have a more robust and diverse board with student voices at the table. Everything that we are working to achieve is for our students, and I'm proud that they are a part of the important decisions being made around their education. They deserve all the resources and supports that we can provide, and then some more. And I'm looking forward to continuing to work alongside members of city council, the school district, and the board, who are equally committed to our students. As many of you know, I've been in over 200 school visits since becoming mayor. I always say it's my favorite part of my day and favorite part of my job, and that's the truth. And when I think back on what I've learned from these visits, it's really simple. Our kids are perfect. They're smart, and they're talented, and they deserve all the resources and supports that we can provide to them. So, I'm very proud to work along with members of city council, the school district, and the board, who are equally committed to our students. I look forward to continuing to work with all of you to accelerate our progress and ensure we have quality public schools in every neighborhood. And I sincerely want to thank all involved: city council, the Board of Education, Dr. Height, his staff, council president, our Philadelphia delegation, and Governor Wolf, for all the attention and help they are bringing to this very, very important task. We still are a very poor city, and the only way out of poverty is education, and I think we all understand that and agree to that, and we need to support and fund our education in order to make it, our education system, in order to make it effective. So, thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to be here today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your continued commitment throughout this process and fully anticipated either stronger commitment as we move ahead. This time, I would like to recognize the Chair of the Board, Joyce Wilkerson, President.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Council President Street and members of city council for hosting us here today and for your ongoing support and unprecedented financial support. Mayor Kenny, thank you for your continuous support and for being here with us this afternoon. I will be recognizing the council members as they make their presentations, and we'll be taking it out of order, I'm sorry, board members, what did I say? Board members. Nothing personal. And taking it out of sequence. Board members are volunteers, and they have day jobs that they have to go to, and so we'll be doing our student achievement presentations first so they can get back to their jobs. I also want to express gratitude to all of you for your support. We know what a strong public education system requires, the commitment of the entire Philadelphia community, and could not be possible without the leadership and support from every person in this room. We want to thank everyone here for your tremendous support for Philadelphia schools. Today, we as a board will take a few moments to share about the work we've done over the last year and to focus on our time ahead. We'll then turn it over to our Superintendent, Dr. Height, to provide key updates on the work of the school district. And I'm going to jump ahead to the Student Achievement Committee. The Board has four committees: a policy committee, a public participation committee, a finance and facilities committee, and a student achievement committee. And the Student Achievement Committee is chaired by Doctors Angela McGyver and Chris McGinley, and so I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you. I think it is. The Student Achievement Committee is always driven by looking at how well we're doing to serve the children of the city. And since September 2018, the Student Achievement and Support Committee has held 18 hours of public meetings and has discussed in depth 27 topics, including early literacy, teacher recruitment and retention, the curriculum engine and instructional core, the comprehensive district-wide plan, the Every Student Succeeds Act, recommendations for the 1920 school year and the 2021 school year calendar, multicultural programs and curriculum, comprehensive school improvement, and additional targeted supports, improvements, and the planning process. We've also examined special education programs and initiatives, and the Student Achievement Committee in the remaining months of this year is focusing on the impact of our athletic programs, our extracurricular activities, and out-of-school partnership. In addition to focusing on the traditional public schools, we spend a great deal of time dealing with or working with the authorization of charter schools, and that is quite a time-consuming process. Before the Board takes action on major expenditures, the Student Achievement Committee reviews the intent and purpose of the proposed expenditures before the item is forwarded to the full Board for consideration.
Thank you. So, another big piece of the Board is transparency and accessibility and want it to feel different to the public, so that is a big goal. We have invested a significant amount of time and energy into this, and in this role, we've held 61 public meetings, four committees, developed four committees, launched social media campaigns to provide more accessibility and transparency, and introduced a new board management system. And a big piece is the new Community Advisory Council. We believe that our work depends on building public trust, and we are working very hard to earn this.
Thank you. We'll now go back to, we don't have to leave early, do you? We'll now go back to the pre-established sequence. Dr. Julia Danzy is one of our co-chairs of our Public Participation and Public Engagement Committee, and she's going to be speaking next.
As the mayor spoke earlier, we have, for the first time, have students on our Board, and we are incredibly proud of the work our student board representatives have performed for the Board. Last year, our student board representatives, Julia Frank and Alfred Pratiko, committed to going to where the students were. They attended school visits, choosing schools in a variety of neighborhoods across the city, and in fact, in some of our most contentious votes that we had to take, they were ones who went out there to talk with the students to find out what was their opinion on what was what, particularly as it related to how they come in in our security mechanism. This year's students, Doha Abraham and Amir Williams, will not only continue this work, but hope to expand upon it to include such things as increasing voter registration. We have a great emphasis on the civic responsibility of our students, parting with the district on the work they are doing around establishing of mentorship programs and safe spaces for students, and ensuring all students have access to library cards, to name a few. It is commitment of the Board of Education to give our student representatives the space and place to use their voices that they believe most important. Not only has it been an honor to serve with these young people, we have also been proud to learn that Philadelphia is a leader in having students serving with the Board. We have shared about the work of our students with the cities and districts, hoping to replicate this structure. And I must say, it has really been an honor. We have been impressed with them, and it just reinforces how well and how good students we have out in our school district.
Thank you, Ms. Danzy. Our next presentation is by Lee Huang, who is co-chair of our Finance and Facilities Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. A core priority of the Board is transparency. To increase the transparency and enhance access to our work, we established four board committees that meet in public so hot topics and critical decisions can be presented and discussed in public before we take action on them at our regular action meetings. Committee meetings have also given us a chance to have increased dialogue with those who attend. Unlike at action meetings, committee meetings can be a more informal space where speakers' questions can be answered and discussed on the spot. While we have much learning to do, committees have served as our main tool for engaging with the many challenges facing the district. Next slide. We also started our time together listening and learning from the community in a board listening tour. From these meetings, four clear priorities became clear, which are now the four priorities that have guided our work to date, and these are student achievement, transparency and accessibility, one system of quality schools, and financial stability. These priorities guided our work last year and allowed us to focus our energy.
I confess to have gotten everything out of sequence. We'll now hear from Ms. Huguet Hinton on fiscal stability, financial stability.
I am one of the co-chairs of the Finance and Facilities Committee. In the end, none of our goals will be possible without maintaining our financial stability. We have to find new ways to invest in schools and make sure we're using money wisely. Our fourth and final priority is maintaining that financial stability. We have used our Finance and Facilities Committee as an opportunity to educate the public on various topics, which include facilities maintenance, the five-year budget, as well as charter financing. We have also requested and received reports from the district on lead paint stabilization, plaster repair projects, design and construction projects, environmental remediation, as well as major updates such as salary increases for 32BJ employees, guaranteed energy savings agreement project, review of surplus properties, planning for relocation of the Science Leadership Academy and Ben Franklin High School. Construction changes in terms of the process for ordering, inclement weather planning, planning for the new school on Ryan Avenue, and updates on the potential sales of the Whittier and Belmont Buildings. We have done things like write op-eds and go on radio shows to reach a wider audience on the Board's business-related to district finances, and encouraged parents, particularly in family members, to have an active role in the budget process, which they have had, and hopefully this year will continue to do the same.
Thank you. I'll now ask Ms. Fix Lopez to present Dr. McCollgan's portion. Dr. McCollgan is not here. She ends up commuting from her job in South Jersey, and it's just a real commitment and a challenge for her to make all these events, so Ms. Fix Lopez.
Okay, so we're going to do a comprehension check first because we're going to jump back to the beginning and do a quick overview of what we talked about, and then I'll go forward. That sounds like a teacher, right? Okay, so I'm Mallory Fix Lopez, co-chair of the District Partnership and Community Engagement Committee. And before we go forward, I want to make sure that we're all aware of what we have accomplished in 2018-19, and then we'll take a look forward. So, we brought student voice directly to the Board of Education. This year and last year, we ran a citywide application process to select two student board members, representatives, which you've already heard about. And from that, you've already heard about our four committees. The one committee, as President Wilkerson said, that we haven't heard about yet is the Policy Committee. So, since my script has changed completely, let me find it. Okay, so priority number three is, Dr. McCollgan is the Chair of this committee, which is policy. So, one thing we have heard again and again is that parents, teachers, and community members don't care about the differences between district schools and charter schools. They just want their children to have equitable access to good schools. Even though our role as a governing body is different between charter and district schools, we have to see this as one system of schools and make choices that allow every child to have access to quality schools. That requires a focus on quality, access, and funding. So, through the Policy Committee, we are working to adopt policies that create one unified system of quality education. Our Policy Committee has reviewed 49 policies to be recommended to the full Board for adoption, and this committee is committed to reviewing each of the existing policies to assure that all board policies are current, streamlined, and readily available. And we held quarterly meetings to review the Board Policy Manual and provide recommendations to the full Board. Before adopting any recommended policies, the Board had the opportunity to hear from stakeholders at least three times. At the committee meeting, when the policy was on the agenda for its first reading, and when the policy was on the agenda for its second reading. Through the process, we heard a variety of stakeholders, whose input and feedback was an integral part of our review. And looking ahead, this committee will continue to review Board Policy Manual and receive periodic updates on the implementation of policies to ensure we are using the four board priorities to drive our work. And so, looking forward, looking at the key priorities for 2019-2020, which is what we're spending a lot of our time on and really excited about, as we look at the head, at the year to come, we are focusing on building on all that we have learned and done. We're proud of the work that we have accomplished in our first year in these roles, but I know we believe that we can all do more. And so, this upcoming year, we will be working to narrow our goals and elevate conversations about student achievement. At the same time, you can expect to hear us getting louder as advocates for a revised charter school law that focuses on supporting quality charter schools. And we will be outwidening our reach through the work of our Parent and Community Advisory Council. This council is new. One of the things we did this year, we spent a lot of time on thinking about how we're going to use that council for a wider reach. An example would be, you know, we had a meeting last week with our council. They brought feedback from the community, and it happened to be that we were also visiting the school that week, so it was kind of a nice collective process. Upcoming, we'll be going out with the council more to talk about policy and get feedback on policy from the community, as well as, once we have goals, going out to the community to get feedback as well with our council members. And finally, and this will be the topic of Dr. Height's testimony, we have been deeply concerned by the unexpected and unacceptable environmental challenges facing our facilities. Dr. Height will be talking to you today about a plan for addressing these concerns, and we, as a board, will be holding the district accountable for sticking to the plan and making sure that it works.
Thank you. And expanding on the work of the policy, the council is Vice President Wayne Walker.
Thank you, Madam President. We recognize that we serve and represent a vast number of communities. In accordance with the Home Room Charter, and in order to increase our connection to diverse communities, we established a Parent and Advisory Council. This council consists of 12 community members from across Philadelphia, and they come from a wide array of background: parents, charter and district schools, former educators, teachers, community advisors. This year, these council members have been out in their communities, sharing information about matters that come before the Board, and they bring key information back to board members. We are grateful for the dedication of these individuals and look forward to continuing to grow their work.
Thank you, Vice President Walker. We have upcoming meetings that we invite the public to attend. They're listed there on the Board, and with that, we invite you to those meetings. And now, I'll turn the floor over to Dr. Height.
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, Mayor Kenny, Council President Clark, council members, Board President Wilkerson, and all of the other board members. Thank you for the work that you do, and I think it goes without saying that, and Joyce talked about it already, but the commitment that this group of individuals has made as board members greatly appreciated, and an example of individuals who are serving a pretty significant and very important civic role. So, I thank you for all of the time and energy that you put in to helping us address all of the issues and challenges that face us. Thank you again for the opportunity. Thank you again for the opportunity to talk about the school district, and importantly, about the conditions of our schools. We've made some progress, the challenges we're facing, and what we can and will do better and differently is what I plan to talk about today. I'm also going to add where we need everyone's help. So to begin, we're in the midst of a transformation. Seven years, we've transformed from a state of financial crisis, school closings, massive layoffs in key areas, including operations, minimal capital investments to buildings we know are, on average, more than 70 years old and in dire need of repair. We transformed from that set of circumstances to a district that is making steady progress, academic achievement is increasing, double the number of highest-performing schools, and cut in half the number of schools performing at the lowest quartile. Schools are being recognized as national leaders. We've had seven Blue Ribbon Schools in that time period: Hill Friedman, Penn Alexander, Meredith, McCall, Greenfield, Calver, and Greenberg. We've earned an investment-grade financial rating for the first time since 1977. And we have made strategic investments to begin restoring critical staffing levels in some of the most important areas. We've added 1,700 teachers, counselors, behavior health staff, nurses. We have also made steady progress to improve conditions in our schools. We've invested nearly $400 million to renovate classrooms and modernize basic building infrastructure since 2014, completed a number of major construction projects, including a $39 million renovation at Dobbin's High School, a new livestock center at Saul High School, and continued renovations at Solace Cohen and Wilson Schools. Spent $23 million over the last five years to complete asbestos-related projects in schools, including over 1,400 in the last 16 months alone. We've added 112 new cleaning positions and implemented more rigorous cleaning standards, and with local dollars, and we thank council for that, and additional funding from the state, we've fully stabilized lead paint in 32 elementary schools, certified another 13 as lead-safe, and will certify another 26 schools by the end of the year, and begin the full painting and stabilization at five additional schools during the holiday break. While I acknowledge the improvements we have made, I want to be very clear that what we have done to date is not enough. We have made some major mistakes, have fallen short on my expectations in key areas, and have not fully confronted many of the challenges we have faced. Our students, our staffs, our families, and our Philadelphia community deserve better, and we can and will do better going forward. The challenges are not excuses, but rather, they are a context in which we all must work to create better conditions. Some of our largest challenges include old buildings. The average age of the school districts, 300 buildings, is 70 years old, and we have not invested the money needed for preventative maintenance over the last 15-plus years to keep them in good working order. We have $4.5 billion in maintenance costs. Tight labor and contractor markets. Construction is booming in the city, and the strong economy in Philadelphia has, in some cases, limited our ability to recruit skilled painters, electricians, plumbers, steam fitters, and other key trades. And it limits our access to the expert contractors that we need to manage our 220 school buildings. Under staffing, the scope and quantity of capital projects we are managing has increased dramatically. Since 2012 and through 2018, we averaged below $100 million a year in capital spending. In 2018-19, we budgeted $406 million for capital projects, and our staffing levels have not kept pace with this renewed capital growth. The mistakes we have made have exacerbated our challenges and led to a loss of trust in our ability to provide clean, safe, and welcoming buildings. We have not filled existing vacancies with urgency and focus, leaving us even more lagging in capacity. We have been reactive and not proactive on strategic and responding to issues, on strategy and responding to issues, too often waiting for multiple complaints before confirming, prioritizing, and doing needed work. Our communications to school leaders, staff, families, and the public has been inconsistent, incomplete, slow, and has not included input from the community. We have not consistently completed work with a high degree of attention to detail or quality assurance, and we have been slow to develop contingency plans for situations where there could be potential disruptions. I know the challenges and mistakes have made many question our commitment and our ability to do what's needed to make all schools clean, safe, and welcoming. But I am here to make that commitment as a leader of this district and explain our plan and communications. Our goal is to make sure every school is clean, safe, and welcoming. As initial actions toward our goal, we have begun implementing the following. We've increased executive management of operations functional areas by dividing the operations department into two functional areas so that each gets the attention it needs. We've engaged a district management group, an organization that helps school districts implement proven management techniques to create measurable, sustainable improvements, including interim recommendations regarding organizational structure and span of control. Significantly expanded resources to manage asbestos-related issues with the goal of eliminating the current backlog of asbestos-related work orders by the start of the 2020-2021, and responding more quickly to new work order requests. We plan to hire additional district abatement staff, response coordinators, compliance director, project managers, and communication support. Hire additional certified asbestos abatement companies and testing firms. We want to strengthen our semi-annual AHRRA inspections, and those will now immediately report any imminent hazards immediately to the Office of Environmental Management Services for follow-up within 24 hours. We plan to create and support a hotline to enable staff to immediately report any environmental concerns. We will evaluate any report of suspected asbestos material within 24 hours and provide a report to the building principal in person reporting the concern. Plan to have our facility area coordinators, this is happening right now, and building engineers and principals complete refresher programs on asbestos risk identification and reporting processes. Through January, we're going to have every facility area coordinator partner with their principals to conduct an inspection of every school to identify any potential environmental safety concerns. And we're going to retain an environmental consultant, we've already done this, by the way, to review the environmental scope of construction projects currently underway, and if necessary, make recommendations to expand the scope to include additional abatement activities. Also plan to hire a program management firm to provide comprehensive project management, design and construction management services, and communication support for the school district's upcoming $500 million capital program. And form an advisory board made up of the PFT, local trade unions, medical professionals, city health department officials, university and health system facility professionals, parents, teachers, and students, to review our efforts and identify areas for improvement. In the communication space, we want to engage internationally, recognize asbestos expert Dr. Arthur Frank to help educate staff and community with facts about asbestos, develop and follow a discipline process to more proactively communicate with any school where design, construction, and/or any environmental initiatives are planned, and make all school-based environmental test results beyond the current AHRRA-related reports available on the district's website, and include user-friendly guides on how to read the reports and the results. We want to proactively engage school communities in the process of identifying and vetting relocation sites whenever an issue requires school relocation. The environmental safety improvement plan is supported by the recent borrow of $500 million for capital work. The funds will support more than 200 capital improvement projects across 141 schools, the construction of three new school buildings, Cassidy, TM Pierce, and a new K-8 school on Ryan Avenue, and asbestos remediation and rapid response supports for these capital projects. As I wrap up, our facilities' challenges cannot be quickly or easily solved, and we cannot solve them alone. We need your continued support of the district to implement this plan for the benefit of the children, families, and staff we all serve. I'm committed to have regular, ongoing conversations with you, the public, and the public about our progress on this plan. So with that, that concludes my remarks, and turn it back over to Council President.
Sorry for multitasking. Every now and then, you've got to do more than two, three things at once. Thank you, thank you very much, and again, thank you so much for your commitment. At this point in time, I would like to ask any members who may have questions of members of the school board and Dr. Height. This point, I recognize Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the school board, and thank you for your dedication. I think the salary is a little high for school board members, but we'll deal with that during the budget. I guess I'll start with where we are on abatement of some of the environmental issues, since you ended with that. I asked this question offline, I might ask it online. Will the new effort to abate some of the hazards within the school district impede upon the regular capital improvement plan that you have that has been on the books for years?
Yeah, no, the regular capital programs must move forward. These abatement efforts are in addition to those things, and where we can do those things as part of the regular capital program is important, but it's not either-or. We have to do both, and the asbestos work is in addition to, and in some cases, as part of those current projects. And so the current projects will still move, and in addition, we have to do these critically important abatement efforts, both for asbestos and lead.
So if I understand your response correctly, if we can manage to do this new project and then abate that, that will be considered because of the cost-effective nature of that?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And we are, and just to expand on that, a part of our new process includes making sure that we are planning and analyzing for any type of hazardous materials as a part of any new project, and so that becomes a normal part of the process moving forward. And so, yes, it doesn't stop important capital plans that we already have in place, but it is in addition to.
Segue in a little bit and asking this question. If I heard your testimony, I listen, I listen with my good ear often. If I turn my ear the other way, I'm not listening. But what I heard you say was that the addition of social workers and those staffers that we did not have for a period of time of crisis, we are now hiring, has that improved climate within our schools?
Yeah, it actually has. I mean, and we are, and we're also recognizing that, a couple of points I think that are really important. I mean, and we used to have the distinction, the unfortunate distinction in Philadelphia of having more persistently dangerous schools than any in the Commonwealth, so much so that I think that was an Office of Safe Schools that was actually stationed in the school district headquarters. We're in the fifth year in a row where we have no persistently dangerous schools now, but our efforts have turned more to how do we, how do we help children who are experiencing trauma, and how do we equip educators with the ability to not only recognize that trauma, but have the types of tools in order to address those issues? And so we're in the midst of training individuals around restorative practices. We've worked with behavior health to determine where we put social workers, but the whole point is to look at how do we align and integrate resources that are available both at the district level and at the city level so that we're able to respond more generally to those efforts. I will also add that we just also added an individual, and it's a former deputy commissioner, and it's Kevin Bethel, who is now over our school safety operations, and he is going, his work, since he left the force, since he left the Philadelphia Police Department, has really been on focusing on how we actually disrupt the school-to-prison pipeline and how we think about other ways to engage with young people, and he is starting that work in the district right now.
So he's one of our co-chairs on a special committee for criminal justice reform, so you should have led with that because that's like saying we just got TO and he's going to be on our Eagles team. That's how impactful I think he's going to be finally, and I'll end with this. I'm excited about newly councilperson-elect Catherine Gilmore because she's talked about in her campaign literature and dialogues after that, that she's dealing with conflict resolution. Talk to me about how all of those things are we going to consider during a conflict resolution course within the public school system?
Yeah, we have quite a few programs around conflict resolution now. It's generally at many of the elementary schools, but it's a, I mean, we have to think about how do we train individuals to do that, and we do a lot with restorative practices with the older children, but a lot of conflict resolution and positive behavior interventions at the elementary schools. And we just have to get better at making that a part of what we do more naturally as opposed to an add-on or something. It should be a part of what children experience in a classroom on a regular basis, and to teach them how to resolve conflict in ways that don't always result in violence. And so that's part of what we are training individuals on, but we needed to start with people able to recognize when children have been, have had a traumatic experience so that we're not, so that we're not providing discipline for something where we should be providing support and making sure that individuals are equipped with the tools in order to do that. And positive, I mean, and conflict resolution is one of those tools. It's also something that Kevin Bethel is helping with, and he's training around, he's training, retraining all of our school police, and really thinking about how those individuals become additional individuals in schools that can help manage conflict and to help teach children how to manage conflict.
There's an interesting movie, Blind Spotting. If anybody saw it on Netflix, I encourage you to watch it. And it talks about stereotyping and then conflict resolution as a result of how we see each other and how we deal with confrontation. And I, you know, if you are an insomniac like I am, Blind Spotting is something that I think every student might want to take a look at. It's a little racy, but they watch it anyway. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I just
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that some of the work that the district is now doing around, you know, student conduct and how faculty interacts with the students, how staff interacts with the students, comes out of the presentations that students made at our board meetings. We heard time and time again, you know, in a conversation that grew out of the metal detectors, that children, too many children, felt like they were part of the school-to-prison pipeline, and Dr. Height and the staff heard that and has really not dealt with it at a surface level, but is prepared to really dig deep in reshaping how it is that we deal with the issues the kids identify.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Height, real briefly, before I call on the next member, and we're happy to hear that you all have gone in the market. My assumption is you got some pretty favorable rates right about now with the $500 million borrowing. And while we're excited about the notion that we're going to finally be able to make a meaningful improvement in our school facilities, it's obviously, from our perspective, because we just embarked, well, not just, but we recently embarked on a similar program we just embarked, well, not just, but we recently embarked on a similar program with Rebuild, where we had a significant borrowing to improve the city's infrastructure around rec centers and playgrounds. And during that debate, we got to a point where there was a significant level of conversation around participation, MBE, WBE, and DBE. And I know it's very early on in your process, but tell me if you have given any thought or what you will ultimately project, and not necessarily in terms of this very specific number, but what your thinking is around having full participation. We anticipate that it will be a similar level of requirements. I don't know if you all have a project labor agreement or whatever, but it will be a prevailing wage job, is my assumption. Therefore, it will likely be union participation, and as you know, there's been this challenge with respects to getting the appropriate level, with the exception of a couple of unions, high levels of minority participation. So we want to know, have you given any thought about how we achieve relatively recent, decent numbers? Because that, just to tell you firsthand, that can be, present a challenge in terms of getting, particularly in your case, where you actually have CTE programs. You know, I think that's an awesome opportunity for you to enhance that program with on-the-job training for those students that are currently going through that process.
And so do we, Mr. President, and it's, that's an important, that could actually be an important pathway for children in CTE programs, and actually encourage more to move into that space. We've created an apprentice program within the school district around some of our facility and some steam fitters, plumbers, electricians, but we can do a lot more with that. Your question is similar to the question that we get on a regular basis from the board president, and as a result, we are actually reviewing all of those processes, and we're starting with our procurement policy and rewriting the procurement policy so that we can not only state numbers that are consistent with where the city is, but we have processes to monitor those things. And so we are looking at that as a part of this whole thing, and really will come back with a set of recommendations to the board about a new policy that will allow us to expand the minorities who are, who are employed as a result of this $500 million. And we do have project labor agreements at the district, and they require prevailing wage, and so all of those things, we've been asked to review and to come up with a set of recommendations around how do we ensure that we can have a workforce that's more representative of both our students and the citizens in Philadelphia.
Okay. Just a brief recommendation. Having some knowledge about development, you know, given the district I represent, it's always been said that the owner of the job will dictate the terms of what their participation will ultimately be. If that particular developer, and in your case, school district, i.e. the owner of those schools, said that it's going to be 45, 50%, then people, if not, people that are not prepared to adopt those strategies, you could just put a big sign up, need not apply, right? And given the level of interest in these significant, high-paying jobs, we think that we can get there. So just going to recommend, we put some very aggressive numbers in our, in our program, and I'm not going to sit here and say it was easy to meet those numbers, but people do at least come to the table saying that we're going to try to meet those goals, so, you know.
I appreciate that.
All right? Thank you.
I will add, the other, the other thing that's part of our consideration and part of the challenge is the school code, that then also has what we can do within the state statute and what we can't. And so that's another thing that we are trying to work through, but we want to get to a lot more aggressive.
Is the school code governed or monitored by the executive or the legislative branch or both?
Legislative branch.
And so I think we have had some significant legislators in our city and affiliate delegation that I think have similar viewpoints about this, so the sooner we get with them, the better I would think.
Thanks.
All right, thank you, thank you very much, Superintendent. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
And I want to acknowledge and thank the board superintendent Height for your comments this morning. So we have been spending a lot of time together, and I appreciate, you know, the comments that were made this morning about the commitment around environmental issues. There's lots of stuff I would love to talk about today, including like budgets and school staffing stability, the Renaissance Schools Program, trauma and safety supports, and truancy, but I do think that the most important thing I want to lead with is the facilities issue, because it is something that is constant, it's important. You and I have seen families and communities who are filled with passion about the safety of their children and certainty that things have to change, but that this is not a place for us to be, you know, like fearful of or not leaning into. Parents and communities are our biggest advocates. I said this earlier, it's amazing that the school district's population has stabilized in the last few years, it's no longer declining. People in some areas of the city are increasing our school populations by leaps and bounds. Mayfair Elementary School has 2,200 kids, which is as big as a college campus, you know, in some areas. So there are points of opportunity here, and the biggest concern that I hear from parents and school communities is how poor communication strains public trust and the ability for us to find common solutions that can move quickly and with confidence. So I want to talk about a few of the ways in which, you know, we could talk about how to build, rebuild some of that public trust back in. One of them has been to acknowledge the hard work, and I know this is an area that is complicated, because, you know, you have an environmental review, but I really want to acknowledge the work of the PFT around, and their environmental specialist, specifically Jerry Roseman, who has an incredible knowledge base around each and every school. He's been very active and proactive about going out there, reviewing things, obviously with different constituencies, but a common goal in mind, and that is the health and safety of the occupants within that building, and sometimes, you know, with, with hard conclusions at the end of it. The struggle has been that there's been some question about the district's team and the PFT's team being in coordinated alliance. So is there, and is the district open to a formal or some type of written policy that will ensure that the PFT's environmental director is included a part of reviewing construction projects that are underway to ensure environmental work quality and to protect, you know, the health and safety of all the residents within the school?
Yes, we're working on a, in agreement right now to actually put that to paper and to actually work with the PFT. They gave some recommendations, and naturally, we're working back and forth with those recommendations, but the answer is yes.
I think that that would be great, because that would be a big step forward. In part, the district does have its environmental director, we want to respect that, but it helps to have an independent review, and, you know, in the places that we've been in, the parents really do trust a lot of the work that's been brought forward, even when the information has been tough, even when we're not always in agreement, but at least it's a feeling that there's at least a separate review, so I appreciate that. Would you, do you have a policy about construction during school time when children are in the building? This has been another area where is active construction around lead abatement, asbestos removal, et cetera, et cetera, going to happen when children are in the building during school time? Is there some, or is the district discussing whether projects need to happen during non-school hours as opposed to during school hours?
We do. We assess if, in fact, what can happen during school hours versus what needs to happen and when there are no children, or what needs to happen with no children in the building. And so we do analyze that. It does, one of our challenges that I did not talk about is the time needed to do many of these projects, and some can't be done at night, and we were, so there were like project, there's a project at Bodine, and one of the parts of that project that they're doing on the outside can only be done in the daylight, can't be done in the evenings, and so it creates for us, it would create a longer timeframe. And that's one of the reasons we're looking at and exploring all of our assets to determine what could become a swing space, because if, to the degree that we can use swing spaces more, we could then accelerate some of the projects, but it will not accelerate all. So it's not, it's not realistic to think projects, no projects can be done with children in the building. I mean, we, the Solace Cohen is having, it's having a new school built in front of it while children are in an adjoining building next door, but in order to get some of these projects moving, we almost have to do some with children in the building. And so to that, to the degree that we have to make sure those areas are properly sealed, properly tested, and we're communicating that information properly to the, to the staffs and communities and families, yeah.
I mean, it would help to have some kind of a, you know, some kind of a threshold, in part because like the EPA has like a healthier, a guide to healthier school renovations. There's a lot of concern about indoor air quality in a city that has such high rates of childhood asthma that triggers are happening, you know, and so I think one of the big questions that we hear a lot is when we're doing major lead abatement repair, if there's asbestos removal. Like, is there a threshold at which point you say, these things can't be done with children in the building, while recognizing that, look, some things are on a case-by-case basis, it's really hard for us to, you know, like if there's a tiny portion, it's not exposed to children, it can be fully sealed off and will not impact air quality, then I think that's an issue, but what we're seeing is that in certain cases, it feels like the, the, the construction or the abatement is significant enough that children are being exposed, and there's a lot of concerns about whether and how the district is using any kind of a threshold beyond we're checking it out, or is there an IAQ threshold or something along those lines that we can assure people?
Yeah, there are, there are IAQ thresholds that we have to actually adhere to, and I want to, I want to come back, because I talked, I was talking about construction in general. The abatement projects are happening during non-school hours, and so they either happen at nights or on the weekends or doing longer terms when children are not in the building. So all of the lead stabilization is happening in the evening, and then the school is cleaned after each evening, and then the children come back, and it's on a, and then you have to move the individuals out of that space, seal the space, and then test the space before you can reopen it. So the abatement projects are happening when children are not in those areas, and they're either in the evenings or on the weekends.
Yeah, and I'd love to keep talking a little bit about how that can be more clearly communicated to families. Does the district have a map of secondary emergency locations by region? I mean, we're obviously, we shouldn't be surprised necessarily, some of the things, you know, we, we have had years of disinvestment, so one of the things I try not to do is tell people nothing will ever happen or don't, you know, we just need to fix a problem as they come up. But in certain situations where we see more significant issues, like at Pratt this morning or at T.M. Pierce, or certainly the Ben Franklin thing was obviously, those are much more significant, have you started work on like possible by-region second, emergency locations?
Yes, we have.
I heard you say swing space, so I'm not sure if that's what you mean by that.
Yeah, that's the same, the same thing. I mean, we call it swing space, and each, each school has an identified emergency site that they can relocate to if in fact, if in fact, an emergency happens at that school. So if there's a power shortage or the water is cut off, or the area is declared by the fire marshal not to be safe, then we could move children on an emergency basis to others. What we're doing now is identifying other areas with spaces, with space available that we could then relocate children to more long-term if we needed to. One of the, naturally, all of these things come with challenges. We found more environmental issues at one of the places that we had identified as a space that could house another school, and so we have to go in and do the same types of inspections at those places, and then get those repairs done so that we could then use those facilities in the event that we had to move whole schools.
Okay. And then, you know, there's been some reporting about the issue of some of the problematic contractors that have mismanaged projects and significantly put children at risk. I think the Toxic City report talked about Gunter Contractors, which received millions of dollars from the district, in which one child got carbon monoxide poisoning, and there was botched infrastructure fixes at Lowell Elementary School, but, you know, Gunter is scheduled to continue working on the roof and other types of things. Has the district, and that, you know, there, I'm just giving one example, but there are others in which like asbestos repairs are concerned, does the district have a protocol for banning contractors who fail to, do you have a policy in place that is going to allow you to, you know, either ban contractors or hold them accountable, or do clawbacks or clear stipulations for what happens when contractors violate the terms of their work agreements?
This is actually a policy that the board has under consideration now. It was presented, there are some gaps in the policy. It refers to other provisions, and they don't necessarily link back in a way that's appropriate, but both in connection with our asbestos abatement work, our everyday construction, our MBE, WBE, we appreciate the need to really strengthen our debarrment, disqualification processes. We're also, I know in our legal department, looking to increase our capacity to really move aggressively to clawback funds when that's appropriate, or to pursue contract terminations, because we understand that it has been a problem, and we need to do better. So we'd appreciate your input on the policy. It's actively under consideration now. It'll be coming up for first reading in the, in the next month or so, and final adoption right at the beginning of the new year, so if you have any input, we appreciate that.
No, that's very hopeful, and I appreciate that, and I'm sure there are other council members who also have like a lot of experience in that area, but I appreciate that, because I think that's been one of the concerns. We don't want to allow some of these poor actors to continue. My last question is whether the district has considered adopting a policy to allow, I think we've, we've taught, we may have talked about this earlier in another meeting, but for large contractors, large construction projects rather, to have some type of like a project manager in place so that we can ensure quality and completion of construction from start to finish. I know we have not funded our facilities and operations to full capacity. I think I asked you for this before, would love to see an organizational chart for the facilities and operations section, both on the operation side and on the capital side to some extent, but, but, you know, this question about whether these projects are being ushered through, and can someone be sitting on them, especially when they're large-scale construction projects?
Yeah, that's part of the, that's part of the restructure of the functional areas in the capital program, and so we could, we could send to you the current structure, but don't think that structure is going to be the same moving forward. That's, that's why we have engaged the outside consultants to help us look through, look at systems processes and structure and span of control. The, it also, all of our capital programs moving forward also include a manager and a construction manager, someone to shepherd that, and that individual is, and then we actually have to manage the manager, right? So you can't just leave individuals out there, but it, it's all hands on deck, but yes, all of the projects moving forward will have a full-time construction manager.
I want to speak about this, because this is an issue that the board has invested a fair amount of time on, that, you know, when we were considering borrowing a half a billion dollars, it's how are we going to manage it? We can't have it roll out like some of the other projects. And so, you know, the district is looking at increasing capacity, contracting out, you know, there've been examples in the city, when, you know, you bring in additional oversight, our projects are very complicated, it's four-part bidding, you know, we just have a whole host of requirements, and I think the last several months have been very sobering for all of us, and we're all determined that it moves ahead well-supervised. And one of the things that the Finance and Facilities Committee, you know, has asked, insisted on, is that we get a plan, that the plan have deadlines to it, so that we'll be able to track carefully, you know, whether the district has the capacity to undertake these projects and also to oversee them as they're, as they're implemented.
Thank you. And, you know, again, I just want to thank the board and the school district. You know, the half-billion dollars in infrastructure borrowing is the biggest investment that we've had since, you know, a number of administrations, and I know we're coming out of a long period of disinvestment and, you know, attrition. And I know we're coming out of a long period of disinvestment and, you know, attrition and all of that. And as we rebuild, my urging, and I'm sure my colleagues will share this as well, we know you can't do it alone. The state does have to pony up. This is the, the state has Plan Con, it's got a vehicle for school infrastructure investments. This is not just a Philadelphia problem, it's a problem all across the state of Pennsylvania. If we want to rebuild our towns, villages, communities, neighborhoods, we should be starting with public schools. They are a central nexus for family, for neighborhood, for community, for jobs, for opportunities, and for equality and learning experience that the state needs. So to the extent that this body can be incredibly unified, going to the state, going to our governor, and making it clear and unrelenting and uncompromising in our demand that there needs to be money into Plan Con this year to match the half-billion-dollar investment that the school district has put up, and the 50% of Philadelphia public school funds that the city of Philadelphia has ponied up, this is on them to do. And to the extent that we can be partners, vocal advocates, I just encourage the district to consider the parents who are frustrated, often angry, they are your strongest advocates. They will do anything for their children. We heard it, their room's full of anger, yes, but their rooms that start with love, first and foremost, for their children, for their teachers, and ultimately for their schools. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Parker, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. Let me just start by lending my voice to the chorus that we heard here, thanking this board. I will dare say that your public engagement and interface with everyday residents in the city of Philadelphia, since you all have been established, is unprecedented, and just need to say a huge thank you for that. We don't take that lightly, that level of transparency and willingness to sit down and, and listen to parents and students who are very frustrated about the state of their, their schools. It, it takes a lot of courage to roll up your sleeves and do it, so we want to thank you. And Dr. Height, I want to say a special thanks to you, Yuri, and all of your team members, just for where you have brought the school district of Philadelphia financially. I mean, just out of the red and from the muscle. And while it is so easy for us to talk about what we need in the district, and with all of the contributions that this city council and this city of Philadelphia have contributed to the district, I'm always anxious when people come up with creative solutions about how to generate new and recurring revenue that will help you deal with some of those issues. I'm honored to have had the opportunity to do so in a, in a prior life, but it's with that spirit in mind that I ask you, how are we, it sounds ancient now, is the charter school reimbursement line item still a conversation, or is that off the table?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's on, and then it's off, and then it's on again, and then it's off. I mean, currently, we haven't heard much about that in, in recent months, and I don't, I don't know if it's on the table or off, I mean, I don't know if it's on again or off, but it is, there's been a lot of talk about it, but then it's just no money to fund that type of conversation. There was some brief, there was a brief conversation about doing something around cyber charters, and, and having some monies returned for certain services that they charge full price for, but that has, I don't think that has moved either. Looking at Ori, I don't think we, I don't think anything around that issue has moved at all.
This, the, the whole charter school legislation is an issue that the, the board and the district are tracking closely. We are in contact with the governor's office. The governor has proposed, you know, comprehensive reform, there are conversations going on about, you know, shorter-term initiatives, but this, this is an issue that's going to, at the end of the day, turn on increasing the pie. You know, there's just not enough money funding, you know, flowing through public education and the Commonwealth, and, and, you know, so it's, it's an ongoing conversation.
Please, if you will, keep us posted. We often tell people, and particularly as a member of this body, it is so easy using the bully pulpit of this microphone and the cameras that come in here every Thursday, and a group of people who are education advocates come and fill the chambers, and we talk about the needs of the district, and we are usually successful in securing the money. But the muscle, the muscle, the muscle, and, and whether or not you truly have leverage to deliver for the school district of Philadelphia, is about whether or not you can leverage funding coming from Harrisburg, because this is, this is the course. So please keep us posted on that.
Well, we, we will do that. We can do a briefing, there's, you know, there are a lot of different legislative proposals that are, that, you know, some are moving short-term, you know, little fixes that might move faster, but we, you know, welcome the opportunity to sit down and, and talk with people about where we are with our charter school program, what's changed, what's going to remain the same, what we project in the future. We welcome that opportunity.
Next, I want to follow up on Council President Clark's line of questioning, and Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown, who was here but had to leave for another meeting relative to the procurement policy. So Dr. Height, I was happy to hear you talk about the internal review, particularly relative to the borrowing, and when we think about MWBEs and the process for how they gain access to participating in, in that economy. Tell us, if you will, will you, or does the school district interact with OEO here in the city of Philadelphia? When we are trying to find firms who are certified, remove all barriers to access and entry for them, what does that interface look like?
Yes, we do work with them, and, and have worked, they've advised on some policy recommendations that we have moving forward as we try to finalize a new procurement policy. And so, yes, we do interface and work with them.
So in preparation for this meeting, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, for example, had an intern in her office to, to just walk through the school district's website, as if they were new, looking at it from the perspective of a business owner, a minority business owner who wants to do business with the school district of Philadelphia, just using technology. And, and she, she found the following. She said, on the certifier's list for the school district of Philadelphia, there were four links that were either broken or did not directly appropriate to the, the webpage that it, it needed to reach. In addition to that, she noted that there was a procurement event, several listings, and they were like out of date, and, and multiple links relative to MWBE policies from the general vendor page, they, they were broken. So if we know Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, she did this to say, hey, can we get someone in the IT department to make sure that we walk through accessing that website, to make sure all of those links are live, that that information is available? Because if you are new, and you're looking at this as a potential opportunity, not having access to that information is a barrier to, to access. In addition to that, Dr. Height, and this is a question, you know, I always ask every year, and it's because I came through the school district of Philadelphia during the Dr. Constance E. Clayton era, and about 40% of the teachers in the city of Philadelphia were African-American. So I saw women who looked like me, I saw African-American men. How are we with our recruitment efforts, and particularly getting African-American men in our, in our public schools?
Yeah, this year, we were very successful, actually, in, in recruiting more minorities as a part of the new teachers who joined the district. It's work that continues, and we are now, there's now an exciting opportunity with PDE Temple, the Community College, Chaney, and it is an initiative that looks at young people who are sitting in their classrooms right now, and making an investment in that young person's college costs, and to allow them to come back, if in fact, they come back as a teacher here in the school district of Philadelphia. And so what we are trying to do is invest in the young people who are sitting in their classrooms, who may not be thinking about teaching as a career choice, and trying to provide some support for those individuals to go through college with the agreement that they would then come back and teach in our district, because we're going to solve this problem with the young people sitting in their classrooms right now. Because quite frankly, they're not in the colleges and universities, and we want to make sure we begin to turn that around. We also have to turn around the whole narrative around what it means to be a teacher, and, and how do we make that something that we, our young people want to pursue versus something that they are trying to move away from. And we, so we have, we've seen increases in the numbers of individuals who are coming as minority teachers. I think a third of the, I'm sorry, 25% of those who were hired this year were minorities. Not all were male, unfortunately, but we are actively seeking males, and we are doing, we have individuals who are partnered with partner universities, the historically HBC, I mean, the historically black colleges and universities, and with all of the colleges and universities around that also send minority individuals, that have a large numbers of minority individuals. We, we sent a team to Puerto Rico to recruit individuals, because many of their schools closed, and so had a large contingent of individuals who were bilingual, who, who were able to come into the school district this year as well. So we're going to continue with those efforts. Those efforts are extremely important to us. And I'll just add that working with the Mayor's Office of Education, Otis Sharif Almaki, with, who is doing some work around black educators, and really trying to do our part to also increase the number of individuals who are going to colleges and universities to become teachers.
Thank you for that. Finally, I just want to, again, reinforce the Council President's notion relative to the $500 million investment. If we don't leverage our students to get access to apprenticeship programs and on-the-job training from those who will be fortunate enough to do business with the school district, it will be a missed opportunity that is, that will be detrimental, not just to those students, but our, but our city, because that pathway is a pathway not to a low-wage job, but we're talking about a life-changing opportunity to be self-sufficient. And during our budget hearings for the school district, that'll be an issue that I will be very much interested in hearing what the school district's process and progress is like. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank the school board for being here and having this conversation, and I want to follow up on some of the questions that my colleague, Councilwoman Parker, made reference to regarding this new borrowing that you did in October. For these projects, most of these projects, I know you're going to be hiring a program manager firm in February of next year. Can you give me some nature of these projects? I know many of them are for existing capital projects internally. Are these the type of projects that you'll be growing staff to do, or mostly external?
It would be mostly, these are, some will be internal staff projects, most are probably external. Most of these are probably external, and it includes, yeah, so it, yes, most are external, and then they, they're multi-site projects in some cases, some of those could be done by some staff, and then there's some IT projects as well, but it, it also includes capital project administrative staffing, and so that's part of it.
So I had a, I didn't want to make an assumption, but I had a thought process, and most of these projects are mostly external. Considering the pressures regarding the significant capital deficit that the district has, and the desire to get these projects done, how will you address the ability to grow capacity for businesses, local-based businesses in the city of Philadelphia, as well as discuss some of the pipeline issues that Councilwoman Parker discussed with the need for expediency to get these projects done?
Say the last part.
How will you balance between the need to provide a pipeline and training opportunities and job development opportunities for people coming out of school district, and also for people in the city of Philadelphia, versus the need for expediency to complete these projects?
Yeah, I mean, I think we have to, I, I think, the, the Councilwoman just talked about, and using the, using the $500 million as leverage to provide opportunities with the ability to learn while they are doing this work, and to get into some pre-apprenticeships in work that they're already being trained to do. And I think we've seen that in projects like Penn Assist, we've seen it in the, the pre-apprenticeships that we've created with young people in, in our CTE programs. But I do think that part of the external request is to leverage these types of things that we want to see, where we want to increase access for our young people, and, and talk about the young people, not necessarily completing the projects, but learning, learning trade, and learning for their certification in a, in a respective area, while they are apprenting, or in apprenticeship with individuals who are skilled in those areas. And so I do think it's an opportunity to leverage opportunities for our young people so that in the future borrow, and future borrows and future capital work can be done by those young people who would then have the ability to do that work.
And is that someone that would be tasked to the program manager or management firm to do that?
Yeah, well, it would be tasked to the, it's, we have to construct what we want that to be first. I mean, I do think we would have to, and the, our board president has been talking about opportunities for our young people as we think about the types of things that are going to be happening on these projects. I think we have to first define what it is we would like to see, and then we'd have to task that in a part, as a part of the RFP for these jobs. I mean, I think it has to be written into the proposals, or the request for proposals that we want to see as a part of this work.
So as part of the RFP, and the compensation that would go to the program management firm, will part of their compensation be tied to their ability to develop that pipeline, as well as provide, as well as provide opportunities for businesses based in the city of Philadelphia? Would that be part of their compensation as part of their program management?
Yes, yes.
So as you, have you completed the drafting of the RFP, or are you in the process of doing it?
We're in the process of, we, we drafted the RFP, and it was based on an RFP that the city did some years ago, and we, we drafted an RFP that I believe is out for the, the general project management of the whole $500 million, and then we're going to have project managers for multiple things within that.
And you're saying that part of the compensation for that project management firm will there, will be based on their ability to do the goals we just discussed?
Well, we're thinking about that job, but, well, I was thinking more about that job by job, and so it's not, I don't think that's written into the RFP of the project manager for the, for how we would then look for the groups that would do this work for us. I think that becomes a part of how we establish those jobs, and then what those individuals would then use as criteria to vet the companies that we would want to respond to those RFPs.
But I think you, you raised good, a valid point, and I think it's probably worthwhile for us to, you know, step back and make sure that we've structured the right program. I know my experience is with the NTI program, and it was, you know, creating a pool of minority demolition contractors was part of the concept, and it's the kind of thing that has to be integrated early on, and I know my colleague, Mr. Wong, has, has experience and thoughts about that as well.
Yeah, really appreciate the question, and as board members, we are sensitized to making sure that the construction projects are done to high quality, on time, and we have to monitor that, and we will receive appropriate information to make sure that we're monitoring that, and we've also requested information on MBE, WBE participation, so we will be monitoring that. So it's kind of an all-of-the-above approach. So it's kind of an all-of-the-above approach.
And Councilman, we have time to do that. It's not out yet. I said it, I think it was out, it's not out yet. So we can go back and take a look at that.
Because if you don't tie that type of goal to their compensation, it won't get done. Want to continue the conversation regarding this capital initiative, and how will you provide information, and I, well, let me step back. I see that the program manager firm were responsible for, along with the operations team, providing comprehensive project management design and communication support. How will you educate various stakeholders for the school district regarding this new infusion of capital dollars?
Yeah, I think one of the things that is important is what we would have to talk almost project by project. And if a school is impacted, we're taking now a whole different tack on the type of information that we provide to those communities, to those staffs, around the work that is going to be happening in. And we want to be able to tell, to inform individuals of what they can expect, by what time, what, and what would be the desired completion date. We would want to give them constant updates about the projects and how those projects are moving on a, at the very least, a monthly basis if they take a long period of time, but a bi-weekly basis if not. And that is information that we have to be a lot more proactive about, as opposed to a project is happening in your school, you might see activity. But instead, defining for individuals everything that they should expect to see, everything from how young people will enter the building, exit the building, if in fact it changes traffic patterns in some cases, and all of the environmental testing that will be done if it is in existing spaces. And so, I think we have to actually do a much better job of being proactive around schedules, timing, and the scope of the work that we expect to be done by what dates.
And that ties into the environmental safety improvement plan that you laid out, and that this program manager firm, along with the operations team, will be responsible for following. And so, looking at these points, you talked about under point number 10, developing and following a disciplined process to more proactively communicate with any school where design, construction, and/or environmental initiatives are planned, and there's a goal of December 2019. So, give me some perspective on how you're going to communicate that, considering that we're already basically in December.
Yeah, so we're starting, we're starting the process for what we're trying to do there. I think you said number 10?
Uh huh.
Number 10. So what we're trying to do is come up with a process of how, it's not for every job, but it's the process that we will follow to ensure that communities are made aware of the work that is going to be happening in those communities. And the best example I have is the lead paint example. When we did lead, when we did paint stabilization in schools, we were, we had a group of stakeholders from the, from those schools that were going to have that work done. Those individuals knew the time schedule, they gave feedback on the communication to go to other parents to make sure it was in, that people would understand what was being done. And we want to make sure we have a similar process for every project that we do that's going to involve a school and a school community. And so that that process would then be designed for our, whoever is doing communications from our, on our part, what do we need to communicate? Who needs, who needs to receive the communication? What are the timeframes? What are the things that they should expect, so that we are very active in that? So, the, we're trying, we're in the, we're in, we're in the phase of developing that, so we will have that by December 19th. And that is our process that we will use on every project to make sure that communication happens.
That's communication process for planned projects, but what's the communication process for projects that are not planned when things have been discovered?
Yeah, I mean, that's work that we are, we're learning a great deal about that, dealing with the issues we're dealing with right now. And we have, what we've learned about that is that it's best, even, even in the worst cases, to give individuals as much information as we can give them. And people don't want to hear it from being asked that question by the press, or by the media, or seeing something on social media. They want, if in fact we have information, they said, "Give us that information, let us know what is happening, and let us know what you're going to do about it as quickly as possible." And so, those things that are unplanned, if in fact those things become, it becomes apparent that we need to act on that, we're not waiting until we have a plan ready to go for how we're going to address that issue. We are taking that information to those communities, so that they will know that we, we actually are aware of the situation. And even if we don't have a plan yet, we will be telling them when that plan will be available, and what we're going to do until that such time that plan is ready for them to see it. We would actually also want to engage them if in fact they are interested in developing that plan in some cases.
I mean, that's interesting to hear, but I guess my concern is how that's going to occur going forward. We met last Tuesday, and in that meeting last Tuesday, I just happened to learn just prior to that meeting regarding asbestos issues at Hill Freeman. Now, because of the fact that I'm employed by the city of Philadelphia as a member of this body, I was able to get access to that information regarding asbestos at Hill Freeman. And I would think that based on the conversation we had last Tuesday, and the conversation we had prior to last Tuesday, there would be a means of communicating with parents at Hill Freeman regarding asbestos at their school. Has that communication occurred?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know the answer, yeah.
So, from my, my perspective, I'm very engaged.
I know that we've solved the problem.
Well, the problem has been resolved, but when you talk about transparency and providing information, trying to stop the whisper down the road scenario, when that information, when it's learned that there's asbestos at a school, and I know you provided some information from Dr. Frank, and we talked about that last week as well, that information needs to be provided to the parents, and the teachers, and others who are stakeholders in that building. Now, it does not make sense to me, and I'm glad that things have been addressed, but from the perspective that, I don't know if parents even know that there was asbestos in that school.
Yeah, the principal used robocalls.
Did he do robocalls?
Yes, yes.
Okay, just making, making sure.
I just found out, yes.
Okay, because I know I listen to Principal Majewski's robocalls when I'm at home at times, they come to my home. I had not heard that often, when there's other issues, there's multiple robocalls, there's robocalls timed at different times during the day, there is information provided in note bags and others. And so, my concern is that making sure that that information is available and provided in a timely way, so we don't have these situations where people don't know, and they hear about issues after the fact, or they hear from others. And that's part of the transparency and communication issues and concerns, that there's going to be a lot of concerns, even with the ability to borrow the dollars, and the district has done a good job over the past number of years of improving finances, to be able to borrow at this amount of money, because that's something they have not done in a significant period of time because of financial issues. But people are not going to trust your ability to get this work done. I mean, as I said in our meeting this last week, you know, when Hill Freeman was used as the opening of the school year for the bell ringing, you know, there was investment of dollars made at the school at that time, and that was only a few years ago. And to learn in a short period of time later there are issues of asbestos in the school is disheartening. And I think the concern I have, and I've said this before, is the methodology of communicating on a timely basis of information to parents and stakeholders and others who are in our school buildings. And also, I think there's a big perspective that people are not going to believe you're going to be able to get this work done on a timely and efficient way, just based on what they've seen in their own experiences, from their school, where their child goes to, from the issues at SLA and Ben Franklin, some issues at TM Pierce, and we can go down the line. I mean, I think the district, and I've tried to be an advocate for the school district in a lot of ways, there's good things that have been occurring in the district, but when you have this type of situation, and even when you come out with a major initiative like this, people have a lack of faith in your ability to get things done. And I raise this issue because I know in years to come, there's going to be a financial challenge for the district, and that's going to be something coming to members of this body to address that, because we're not going to get the level of dollars that we need in Harrisburg. And it's going to be a real, I can see some real pushback from people in reference to why we should do that when you have not proved your ability to get things done in the past.
Yeah, I'll just add that, so, on the Hill Freeman issue, you're right, we did a major renovation at Hill Freeman, and when we moved Hill Freeman into the Leeds building. And I know the issue at Hill Freeman was some broken floor tiles, and those have now been repaired. We got to go in and repair the floor, but we've removed the floor tiles that were broken, which could have happened, because if they weren't disturbed when we were doing the construction, they would not have been a part of the construction. On the latter point, though, I do think, and I appreciate the point, I appreciate when you get a lot of, when you get a lot of attention to projects like Ben Franklin, SLA, those things could, those things impact credibility, I mean, and, and impact individuals' trust in our ability to do work. But I'll also add, Councilman, that we have just as many projects that we've completed, and we've made some investments, and we've done hundreds of classroom modernizations, we've done, we've done some pretty significant school renovations. And so, there are individuals who are also experiencing something different, because we've made some improvements at their schools as well. And when you have things that receive all of the attention, like Pierce and SLA, Ben Franklin, it does shake credibility, but I also want to also remind a lot of individuals that we've also had a lot of projects that we've been able to accomplish that have actually improved conditions in schools as well.
But how have you messaged that information to stakeholders like City Council and others regarding those improvements?
I do it every budget season. I mean, I do it as a part of the things that we've accomplished. I think I did it at the beginning of this meeting, and not the specific projects, but, and then we try to do it in project by project in terms of the work. Now, I will add that it's, too often, it is with the council person who is in that district, and then the other council members may not be aware of that.
So when you say project, I mean, for example, when you say project by project, I mean, to me, even doing something as basic, of a branding of another school building, lead, I mean, I know you've done a lot of work on lead issues, but I mean, there needs to be communication about the stuff you're doing, even if it's just a simple press release, an email, something to let people know what's happening. Because for the most part, people just have lost faith in the district in a lot of ways. I think that's unfortunate, because I know there's good things happening in the school district. I get out of city hall a lot, just about every day, and I try to see what's happening in our city, especially in our schools. And without that comfort and that belief in the district, we're going to have some major problems going forward. And I was someone that was, you know, I was very, I'll just say, I won't use the word agitated, but I'll use the word concerned last week, when the perspective I was getting in our meeting was, we're going to present someone to, let's educate the people of the city of Philadelphia, parents, stakeholders, and others about what asbestos really is. And I understand that need to do that, but if I'm a parent with a child in the district, my concern is what's going on with asbestos right now. Having someone tell me that, "Well, the asbestos you're thinking about is not quite as bad as you think it is, we have all these other issues in the air and the world that are problematic," I don't want to hear that when I just learned about a teacher who got diagnosed with mesothelioma. And I think those are some of the concern, the perspectives that we need to have to make sure we don't have these issues going forward. And I'm, I'm going to say this now, and I'm going to say it again in the future, I'm really concerned on where we are in the future when resources are going to be needed, and people have a perspective of the district does not have the ability to do the projects they need to do, as well as educate children in the city of Philadelphia. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilman Taubenberger?
Chair, thank you very much. And Ms. Walkerson, thank you for being here with your virtually entire board. I think that's, that's very, very good. Dr. Height, I have one question, and it's a follow-up to something you had said, and I just want to make sure I got it right, but I, the idea intrigues me. You had said there is a plan in place, that if one school were to shut down for an emergency, another school could, could be used, or another building could be used to house that school. Is that, is that plan complete?
It's not complete. We're in the process of reviewing all of our facilities and assets. Some are, some with some work could be made available, but all of them require work. And all of them, some more significant work than others, but all of them require work, and a lot of that work is environmental work that also has to happen. But we are developing a list of those facilities, and then what will need to happen in those facilities, so that we are resolving those environmental issues, so that they could become a space in the event we need space to move a school.
And that would be all in school district-owned spaces?
Yes.
Very good. Is it possible, you can give me one example?
South Philadelphia.
Okay.
Pratt, LP Hill. We have, Strawberry Mansion is another, and so those are all Pierce's school. Those are, I'm sorry, not, is the other Pierce? What's the one at 18th and?
If you misspeak on this, I'm not going to.
Yeah, so, I think we have two Pierce's, and I think that's the other Pierce, not the, not the one.
I think the idea is intriguing that you thought this out, the fact that the plan exists, even though it may not be complete, I think, in my eyes, is very, very important, because you just don't know what the future has for anything. I mean, something could go terribly wrong, and being able to educate, continuing to educate children is so, is so very much vital to our mission as a school, as a government, and of course, obviously, as a school district of Philadelphia. I commend you for that, and I, and I thank you very much. If I can be of any assistance during that process, please let my office know, let me know.
Thanks.
And I thank you for everything you're doing.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Do we have, would any council members like to make a comment or statement? Seeing none, seeing none, this will conclude the public meeting of.
We have speakers.
Do we have members of the public who would like to testify? Any witnesses here? Please, please approach the witness table. Thank you very much. When you come forward, give us your name, and feel free to begin your testimony. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Thank you very much. Good afternoon. Feel free to identify yourself and begin your testimony.
Yes, I'm looking for my glasses. My name is Dorrie Waller.
Thank you.
Do the best I can without them.
All right.
Yes, I stated, my name is Dorrie Waller. I worked for the school district from 1999 to 2012 as a secretary. When you work in the office, you know everything that's going on in the school office. I'd like to mention some things that happened while I was employed, and it's still happening today. I also like to make suggestions on how some things can be improved. Here again, asbestos. Here again, asbestos. In my second year with the district, I was transferred to another school. As soon as I walked in and got settled, I began coughing constantly. A few years later, this school was renovated. The contractors were working in their white suits while employees and students were still in the building. One morning, I came into the office and there was white powder everywhere, on the desks, chairs, equipment, and floors. I complained to the principal and was told that I knew that downtown wasn't going to do anything, and I could go home. This is unacceptable, Dr. Height. These contractors should not be allowed to start any work while students and employees are in the building. I think employees present and former, as well as students who think that they have been affected by asbestos should be tested for free. I know of teachers that have taken early retirements because of their coughing. I believe I heard President Clark say on Cody Anderson's show that there was 400 million for health issues in the city. The district could contract with some of these law firms. We hear about asking people to come in who think they have asbestos, and maybe the employees present and former who think they've had this can go and get tested. Now, I'd like to talk about contractors. I've seen contractors sit in the break room all day, waiting for their supplies to come in. Dr. Height, can you imagine the amount of overtime they are getting? There is no accountability for them. Payroll. You could never get through when you call payroll. They are constantly making mistakes on employees' pay. There are some new employees who started in August who had three entries on their pay stub. Each entry was for retirement. Each entry was for retirement, where they were taken out for retirement. Some new employees' names are incorrect on their checks and pay stubs, and payroll still hasn't corrected them. I'm sure checks are still being sent to dead people. When I was working, there was a woman who had resigned and was still receiving a check. No accountability, Dr. Height. Administrative absences. One day, I was told by my principal to mark the assistant principal present, although she was absent. I wasn't told to give her a personal or sick day, but to mark her present. Years later, I found out why this occurred. If there are too many absences by administrators and I guess students, that school and maybe the district will not get funding from Harrisburg. And I know this was a directive from the district. Dual roles. I worked at a school where the assistant principal was also the special ed liaison. This is unheard of, isn't it? As much work as the vice principals and the special ed liaison has to do. This is why so many special ed cases are out of compliance. Now, speaking of special ed, it can take months and months for a child to get compensatory ed services. Some years ago, there was only one person doing comp ed in the district. I don't think it's much better today. To my knowledge, special ed students are to go on a trip, I believe, once a week and go out to recess with regular classes on a daily basis. This is not happening in some schools. And in some instances, the higher-ups knows this is happening, and still nothing is being Dr. Height, you need to visit schools unannounced, without even the principal knowing that you're coming, and just walk around. Misconduct investigations. Sometimes it takes a couple of years before the outcome of teacher abuse cases are resolved. I believe Ms. Blackwell sent a letter to Harrisburg a couple of years ago complaining about the length of time it took to resolve cases. As it currently stands, the outcome of teacher abuse cases are withheld from parents. This should not be so. They are not told what penalties, termination, et cetera, et cetera, were given to the teacher. This rule should be changed. Parents have a right to know, just as if it were a civil or criminal case in court. The plaintiff has the right to know the outcome of case. Some cafeteria managers do not give students seconds as they ask for it. Many of these students do not get enough to eat at home. Some students don't get beverages with their breakfast or lunch. And at the end of the week, I've seen cafeteria staff giving out boxes of frozen food left over from that week to school employees. No accountability. Durham bus service. This is a joke. We've heard about them several times on the news. Why is the district still contracting with them? We know most of, we know most of the students at this bus company transport are special ed. Most of the time, they are late picking up the students. I believe all school buses should be checked to have working cameras on them. Resources. I thought the TV show Parking Wars, whenever they filmed in Philly, that that money was to come to the district. Does it? Teacher, teacher selection. Back when I was working, there was a policy, I don't believe it was ever put in place, where the community would be included in selecting the teacher for a school. Is that still going on? Bullying. A plan has to be put in place regarding bullying. Within the last two years, two 10-year-olds have committed suicide. Teachers, parents, and the community have to be more attentive to our children who complain of being bullied. Something has to be done. Mass shootings. Is there a plan in place for a mass shooter? There should be. We are laughing at what other cities and school districts are doing, strapping the teachers, putting rocks in buckets. But what are we doing? Nothing. I'd be going to wait until something happens before we begin to do something. I really believe schools should have mass shooting drills. Some schools have bomb shelters. Long ago, you know, the bomb shelters? Maybe they could be resurrected. Maybe it would be a good idea to have school police, I don't know if they still have school police anymore, be trained for what to do in mass shooting cases. 440 North Broad. In the summertime, the district office may as well be closed. It's like a ghost town. When you walk in there, when you walk in there, and again, no one answers their phones, everything goes to voicemail. Unacceptable, Dr. Height. In closing, Dr. Height, city council members, and officials, my report card rating for this school district, if I had to report, would be an F. Something's got to be done to make it better, and that is to have more accountability and responsibility.
Thank you very much. If you could give us a list, we could make it part of the record, and we're very impressed with your testimony and all the issues that you mentioned. We thank you very much. This, Dr. Height, or any members of the board, would you like to comment?
I just want to recognize Dr. Maria McCalken, who has come to the meeting. We appreciate your attendance.
Well, we certainly, again, appreciate all that you've said. We're very happy to look into some of these issues and provide response to you. If you give your information to where we can get you, to John Christmas, he'll make sure that we have it, and we'll submit it to the superintendent, president of board, and all members. And we thank you for being retired and being still concerned enough to try to do something about the issues and the problems that you have found. Thank you. Are there any comments from members of council, members of this committee, the school district or the superintendent? Is there anyone else who would like to testify? All right. So we thank you very much. We want to thank, we want to thank city council, and we want to thank the school district for being here. We, we leave the, we leave the public hearing and enter into the committee meeting. Is, are there any other, any comments at all?
I don't think there's a formal meeting.
Well, seeing none, I know, since this is our resolution, this public meeting and public hearing are being recessed, subject to the call of the chair. Thank you all very much.